We call the order the Board of County Commissioners Special Meeting of June 11th, 2013. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute to the flag of the state of New Mexico, this is the symbol of our friendship among united cultures.
Can I get a motion to approve the special meeting agenda?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye. Motion passes. This is a public hearing. This is a discussion regarding the solid waste accounts that are subject to the lean process. So, the motion will be to approve or disapprove placement of liens as listed in the lean register from the Grant County Solid Waste Department through the Treasurer's Office. So, at this time, is there any public that want to discuss this? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve or disapprove. Yes, oh, I didn't see your hands.
Yeah, I guess I received a letter from a Mr. Travestet, James Travestet. He's one of the individuals that has a property. He's sent some information. Couldn't be here today. He actually lives in Albuquerque, has a home in their building here. He's sent us pictures with a newspaper. And he has a home that's under construction currently. It doesn't have any plumbing fixtures in it, doesn't have sheet rock, doesn't have insulation. Him and his wife come down here a couple of weeks a year, is what he says in his letter. They actually sent us a P&amp;M bill where he's only paying $7 a month for electric, so it's basically the meter cost. He's not using any electricity in the place. And sent us also bills where he pays solid waste in Burnaleo County and has done so for years. They intend on retiring down here, but he feels that his house is not a livable structure and as by the ordinance, it says we charge solid waste fees for livable dwellings on the tax roll. So, this is not a livable dwelling is what he feels and so he's asked that the commission pull his off, that he doesn't feel he should be charged with solid waste. When he finishes the home and moves down here, then he says yes, or finishes it, for it is livable, has the fixtures in it, then he feels that yes, it is a structure he should be charging, he has no problem paying for that, but at this point in time, he feels that his property shouldn't be on the list. And he's sent us pictures, like I said, showing the whole inside where there's not even a toilet, it's just all roughed in plumbing, like it's waiting for an inspection.
Are we sure those are current pictures?
He's put a newspaper article in here, which is diversity week to be celebrated at WMU, the Silver City Sun News, and so I can't make out the date of the paper, but it is a current, you know, it's a current edition of the Silver City Sun News, so.
And these most recent pictures, you can tell that nothing has been done, but I did go ahead and read them. So, he's not in the list? So, he's off now? Okay. So, we don't need an issue? And did we?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The question is, do we have, even though he's not on the list for the lean? What about the charges that have accumulated until now? Do we take those off? Is...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Testing. Steve, we can look into that. We don't have to resolve that today. We can look into how to handle that in the future, but I think your question today is just whether you should approve the list or not.
If he's not on the list, we don't have to deal with that. Okay. Anything else? Okay, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the placement of liens as listed on the lean register from the Grant County Solid Waste Department.
Second that. The motion is second to approve the placement of liens as listed on the lean register. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Okay, he, yeah?
When he's going to actually record the liens?
Sure you can.
When are you going to record the liens?
I believe that John and Randy have to sign them, all 357 of them, and once they sign them, then they forward them to the clip shop.
As we get them as soon as possible. Yeah, Randy has all those. Pay your solid waste fees. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn the special meeting. Second. All those in favor, signify saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. And at this time, we'll call the order, the Board of County Commissioners' Work Session. We've said the Pledge of Allegiance and a salute to the flag, so if I can get a, I'd like to change the agenda and move county reports up before the, or at least one county report up before the regular meeting agenda review.
Second.
All those in favor, signify saying aye. Aye. Okay. The purpose of a county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed in the next regular meeting and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with the Grant County Resolution 1301, we welcome the public to attend the county work sessions, however, there will be no public input permitted at this meeting. So, with our little change of our agenda, I'm gonna let John do his report first, and I think you're gonna yield your time to the Forest Service, is that how this is gonna go?
I'm not guessing at all, but yes, Tom, thanks, Commissioner. Yesterday, we attended a meeting put on by the Forest Service as they were transitioning their teams for the fire that we currently have, the Silver Fire, and we talked with them about coming in, addressing the commission and getting some input out. Really, the focus of the meeting, a lot of it, was talking about getting more information out to the public, and so they really want to make sure everybody's informed on what's going on, and so we invited them to come and talk today and invited them to come and tape more messages or work with the reverse 911 system as well to do that. And so, today, Ellen Brown and Forest Supervisor, Ms. Russell, is here to address the commission and give you an update.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'll start by thanking the commission for affording us the opportunity to let you know what's happening, what's the latest. We brought some maps, that is the latest infrared map, which usually is a nighttime flight where the hotspots are. You'll see the acreage at the bottom of that map is 6,710 acres. It was a high activity night, so now they are estimating that acreage of being closer to 8,000, 75 to 8,000. Those IR flights will happen nightly, so you'll see those updates. Just a little background on the fire. The start date for the fire was June 7th, 2013. The ignition cause was lightning. Again, the current acreage from the map is 6,700 acres, now estimated at closer to 75 to 8,000 acres. The fire behavior that has been fairly consistent and the duration has been active on all sides, and the fire activity does not settle down at night, it's been continuing to be very active at nighttime. This particular area is of concern because of its steep terrain, but additionally, it has not seen significant fire in over 100 years, so there is a heavier fuel buildup. The area also has been subject to beetle impacts and there is a lot of dead and dying fuel in there. Air tankers were heavily used and have been heavily used. So far, wind has not been too much of a factor in making things difficult for us, so we are able to use those. As of yesterday, I was hearing that we have put in the neighborhood of 50,000 gallons of retardant on it. Now, retardant usually works a lot better with some support on the ground, but because of the level of danger, there hasn't been consistent boots on the ground. They have, they started the first few hours putting line around it, but it was deemed quickly that it was a very unsafe situation, so the air support is continuing. Yesterday, there was not significant winds, so that allowed fire crews to get into the community of Kingston and do quite a bit of prep work in Kingston. Fire folks are feeling pretty comfortable about the situation in Kingston, although obviously, there's no guarantees. An evacuation of Kingston occurred at approximately 1:30 in the morning, Monday morning. All went well, it went orderly. There's been good communication with those two communities, Kingston and Hillsborough. We did host a town meeting in Hillsborough last night, it went very well. The governor did attend it and is very supportive of both the fire crews and both counties that are dealing with these fires. Smoke, obviously, is a very big issue, and smoke monitors have been set up in both Hillsborough and the town of TRC, and that is a real-time monitor that people can get on to the site and see exactly how much smoke is in their particular area if it's impacting it. Those links are available on NCweb.org, which will be updated frequently. The community effects and strategies that we're working on, Kingston has been very well-prepped again. Hillsborough, I will be going to Hillsborough to be a technical advisor to work with the homeowners in Hillsborough for some of what they can do for home prep, get them prepared in the event. Right now, Hillsborough, it would take a very severe event for Hillsborough to be impacted, but we are going ahead and prepping Hillsborough for an event nonetheless. Yesterday, at 8 o'clock at night, the Northern Arizona Type 2 team took over the fire. The IC is Matt Reedy, joined with Pete Gordon. Fire info numbers have changed. I'll go ahead and read those numbers out. Area code 575-536-3382. The second line is 575-536-3285. 575-536-3287 is the third line. Right now, the incident command post is being hosted by the San Lorenzo Elementary School. They are getting up and running, they're getting their computers going, they're getting their mapping going, so I would expect by mid-afternoon that they are up and fully functioning. There's been some questions on activities on this side, or the Grant-Sowat County side and the Dutch Royal John Mine Road in that area. Right now, the critical need is on the east side with Hillsborough and Kingston. If you notice on the map, there's been very little growth on what we're referring to as the heel of the fire or where it started, but the team comes with a structure protection group and they'll be focusing on all areas of the fire, so everybody will be getting assessments at that point. Let's see, just to update fire restrictions, the heel still remains in stage one fire restrictions, which this allows fires in any other area other than developed campgrounds that have an agency-provided fire ring, and those are also listed on our webpage. Smoking is limited to vehicles or in area three feet in diameter. The state of New Mexico is under a fire ban, which is basically no open active flame outside of propane stoves, and I understand that the Silver City, they've got a fire ordinance going now too. So, I know I've probably forgotten something, so I want to open it up for some questions and maybe field some questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from Ms. Brown?
Yes, sir. Yesterday, when we attended a meeting, I know a couple of times, you know, people that were getting up there talking, they talked about this being a long-term event and a season-ending fire. Does, I mean, to me, I guess that means this fire is probably gonna burn in some form or fashion until we get considerable rain because of the territory, it's not because of you guys, and I know that it was reiterated there too, that this is a full suppression fire, the Forest Service is not intending to let this burn, that if there was a way they could put it out today, they would, it's just the territory is so steep and so rugged and so unsafe for personnel, that's the issue. And so, is that what makes it this season-ending, that there'll probably be pockets places? Is that what that means?
That's absolutely correct, and as far as the danger, we did, early on, have a couple of hotshot crews, which are the elite firefighters. They were turning down assignments because of their lack of comfort in the situation, and I think most of us have been over Emery Pass and we see what that would be like to deal with, and you're correct on the pockets. It doesn't necessarily mean that the perimeter won't be addressed, we'll just have to hurt it, if you will, and it may mean that the perimeter gets more and more secured, but there's likely a number of pockets inside the interior fire that we'll be torching out and burning until we do get significant rain. And as far as the predictions go, we're hearing a couple of different things. It's not El Niño, it's not La Niña, it's what's being called La Nada, and that means it's a neutral, and that's a legitimate term, actually. With a neutral weather pattern, what that means is predicting weather is very difficult, and the weather reports that we're getting have disclaimers saying this is highly variable, and we're seeing it is highly variable within a couple of days, so it's really anyone's guess now what kind of monsoons we're getting. We're hearing both robust rain and very little, so we'll note more tomorrow, more the next day as far as the weather goes.
Thank you very much.
No, I just want to thank you so much for your time and your efforts and Godspeed and hope everyone's safe.
Thank you, we appreciate this part.
Go ahead, Joe.
Well, I was just gonna give an update. We spoke yesterday about the reverse 911 system. We've looked into it, and I know Gene Fortenberry's been in contact with you all, that we can do it in Grant County. Unfortunately, the company we use won't let us go into Sierra unless they go ahead and activate their system, because they've been talking with them, but their system can be activated within an hour, it's just a matter of paying, and so I've been talking with them, working with them, but there is a way that those people can opt in with a cellphone into ours as long as they have a Grant County address, and so we could use it, but Gene is ready to work with you all whenever you need to. If you want to send out messages through that, and it'll hit all the residents in Grant County that have opted in with cellphones, email addresses, and then it automatically picks up all the landlines in Grant County to send a message to them, a prerecorded message.
Yeah, I did talk to Gene yesterday, and I'm aware of that. I've passed that on to the team and the information folks on the team, and we're also gonna try to utilize CAPS the best we can for the team. Again, the team is in the control state now, but we've given the tools that we have to them to utilize.
I just want to say that I appreciate everything you all are doing and keep up the good work, and if you need tenders or anything, I'm sure that the FMO and the county manager will make sure that you have what you need, even in Sierra County, we will come and help you any way we can.
Thank you very much, appreciated, and I wish I wasn't here every year, it seems like, but it's given us an opportunity to develop some great relationships and it's felt out on the fire line. It's good to be supported, so thank you.
Anything we can do to help, we stand behind you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming this morning. Okay, let's go ahead and get back into our regular agenda here, and we'll go through the, through Thursday's agenda. John, you want to take that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you'll see, we have three public hearings, that's basically the majority of our agenda. The first is discussion regarding consideration of proclamation declaring extreme and severe drought conditions imposing fireworks restrictions. As you know, we did this last year, this will be Commissioner Hall's first experience with this. Under the state of New Mexico, the statutes do not allow us to completely ban the sale of fireworks, and so what this'll do is it imposes the stiffest restrictions we can do, but we can't ban the complete sale of them. So, if vendors choose to sell, they can sell. Last year, a lot of the fireworks vendors really worked with us and just didn't open up and sell, and then when the ban went in place, they worked with us. We have one vendor down on Interstate 10, that he had people selling on both sides of him that were in different counties, but he complied with ours, so everybody works really well with us to try and make sure that we are as safe as we can be, and so that's what that'll do, is put on the proclamation. The second public hearing is discussion considering an emergency ordinance declaring a fire hazard emergency and enacting measures to decrease the county's risk of injury to persons, property, substantial financial loss to the county of Grant and its residents as a result of fire. This is the ordinance, I don't know if you want to talk about it.
Mr. Chairman, it's exactly the same ordinance that we've adopted in the past years. I was thinking about the ordinance a little bit, and I'm not sure if last year or the year before, if we distinguish between open fire grills with charcoal versus propane. I can't remember if we've done that, I didn't know if, maybe that would be something that we should put in there if the commissioners wished that we still permitted propane, maybe I should put something in that says, except for propane grills on, you know, open dirt areas or cement or other similar type surfaces, so long as they're not in, you know, some grass or something, if that is what you wish, or we could just leave it like it is. In the past, I think we have applied it as permitting propane grills still, but I'm not sure if we ever made that very clear. I could add a line, the commissioners wished that.
We...
I just noticed it this year, that it wasn't, you know, it's not as clear as it could be. What did you say, John?
Here, under restrictions under C, it says pressurized liquid or gas stove lanterns or heaters are generally allowed unless determined to be a fire hazard by an enforcing officer.
But I was talking about propane.
That's liquid propane is pressurized gas.
Right, so there's the type of stove that has no flame, and then there's also a regular grill? Does that make sense? The camping stoves that have...
Oh, okay, is that what you think that's referring to?
I just, it's not 100% clear, so I just, should we, would you like it to permit a propane grill that has an open flame that you have a lid on?
Yes.
In a certain area, you can't go light up on the, or turn it on on the grass?
Yes.
That kind of thing? Okay, I can add something to that. Otherwise, it's exactly the same ordinance.
Probably clear area, yeah.
Right, okay. Also, I just wanted to point out that the drought information and the fire potential information is behind the proclamation, so you can take a look at that. Yours should be in color, so you can look at the maps more easily and the figures, I guess, and we are now in extreme drought versus last year, we were only severe, so it's not looking better at this point, but hopefully, we'll get the monsoons, and then our fire potential is still very high. So, conditions don't seem to have gotten any better, but have gotten a little worse as far as the drought. And both of the proclamation and the ordinance will expire automatically on 30 days, and we are on time with the proclamation as far as, we have to adopt it 20 days prior to the holiday for it to be effective, and we're almost exactly, it's like 20 or 19 days before 4th of July, so it worked out well with this meeting, so everything should be on time, and I think we have significant justification for the proclamation and the ordinance.
Number three.
The third public hearing is discussion regarding consideration of an ordinance entitled County Capital Outlet Gross Receipts Tax. This is, we did the notice of intent, this is the gross receipts tax that we've been talking about. Mr. Bendixson, who is the counsel on that, will be here on Thursday. I've already informed him to take the long way around, because he'll get turned back if he tries to go through, but he'll be here discussing this. What this is doing is just approving that we go forward with a special election to see if the voters are up to approving a gross receipts tax. If it is approved, and there's also a resolution in the meeting that will lay out that special election, the question, if it is approved, then it would take effect January 1st, 2014, is when the tax would take effect, and so this is just the ordinance to get the process started, it doesn't mean that the tax will be enacted, it still has to go in front of the voters for their approval.
So... Financial reports?
There's financial reports, we have the expenditure report dated June 11th, 2013, for $780,152, $152.41. In it, we have $64,000 related to the construction projects that we're doing, that Cory Caminos building. We've gotten a certificate of occupancy on that building. Cory Caminos has started moving some furniture into it, I think their phones are due to be turned on June 15th. Everything's set up outside, air conditioning is working very well, and there's, I think about $100,000 is the retention that's left with the contractor that is left to be paid once we go through the final punch list items that have been taken care of. Mr. Robinson from Architectural Workshop is the architect on it, and so he's been doing a really good job, did an excellent job on the project, keeping track of everything, going through the punch list, it's been a really smooth-running project. They're fixing the automatic operators on the gate is one of the punch list items that they're working on. As you see the new fencing, it'll be operated automatically by fobs and the buses, so they'll be able to park in that chain link, or wrought iron fenced area, so, but it turned out really nice, we're getting a lot of comments on it. Once we get that final punch list done, then what we'll do is we'll start working with the veterans on a sign, we're gonna change a sign out by the road, and that's where, when the commission had already, had done their motion to rename the building, we had already ordered and installed the sign on the building, the lettering that says Grant County Business and Conference Center, so what we were thinking of doing is, because that's labeled the Business and Conference Center, the other one says Cory Caminos on it, the small building, out at the road, put the nice, a nice new sign that titles it the Veterans Memorial Business, Grant County Veterans Memorial Business and Conference Center. So, we'll work with them to come up with that and then come up with some kind of plaque for the building or something that they wanted to do as you come in. We don't want to do a lot inside the building yet, we were thinking outside, there's a planter underneath that steel canopy that maybe we can do something on that planter to memorialize it to veterans, building with the logos on it or something.
When is, when are we shooting to be in there?
And are we planning in Grand Open?
For Cory Caminos? Yeah, we're planning on Cory Caminos, they're moving in, their phones will be turned on June 15th, and then, so probably next commission meeting, what we'll do is we'll have you go over and tour, that they've got it set up and that it's open and you'll tour the facility.
So, we'll be operating after the 15th?
No, we'll be operating out of that building as of June 15th.
Probably, probably Grand Open in July.
So, if you want to do it in July.
After a work session.
It really does look good, I mean, they did a really good job.
Did a very nice job, like I said...
The building looks totally different from the highway, that's what I heard.
And that was, and that was...
Best parking in Walmart.
We got a lot of people commenting on putting the trees in the parking lot and things, but that was the request of the funding agency that gave us the money to do the remodel, is they did not want it to look like a Walmart anymore on the front, and they did not want it to look like a Walmart parking lot, a big box parking lot, and so they requested trees and things, and so I think it was done very nice, it really does change it. We've gotten a lot of good comments, people were really questioning the trees and some of the concrete curbs and everything, because they like to drive through, but now that it's done and they see the whole thing, they really have commented how great it looks. It's been... Um, it's, it's been, it's been, like I said, a really good project. Now we're going to start working on, if the EDA has funding to do the inside, if not, then we're looking at, if this tax gets passed, possibly use a portion of this to redo the inside and make it, uh, even better for the public than it currently is.
You know, it, it does need work in the inside, the tenet of, of gathering a couple weeks ago. I'll tell you what, it, it's really nice. They use the patio on the outside. It's really a nice atmosphere.
No, it's, it's really a nice, um, and I know that some of the employees of Cory Caminos have talked to me about, they're excited to move in there because they're wanting to put a barbecue out on the patio and so they can go out and cook something for lunch if they wish to. And they're really looking forward to having a nice building they can call home that's not rented and that they're not trying to.
Designed for them.
That's designed for them and not fitted, they're not trying to fit in something that's not designed for them. This was designed with, with their operations in mind. The next is the, the cash flow reports on the general fund, um, it's dated April 30th, 2013. July 1st balance of the general fund was $4,108,555 with year-to-date revenues of $6,272,403 and year-to-date transfers of $302,000 out. Operating expenditures year-to-date of $2,706,173. Salary and benefits year-to-date of $4,490,775. Leaves a cash balance at April 30th of $2,874,310 with projected revenues, expenditures, and transfers through June 30th, 2013 of $39,383. Leaves a cash balance at June 30th, 2013 of $2,913,693, less the required reserve of $2,807,123. Leaves a surplus at June 30th of $106,570. On page two, he shows, shows that we've collected 68.92% of the budgeted revenues as of April 30th, and we've done 19.36% of the budgeted transfers. The next is the road fund. Um, we started July 1st at $425,180 with year-to-date revenues of $984,964. Year-to-date transfers in of $300,000. Operating expenditures year-to-date of $204,046. Salaries and benefits year-to-date of $1,8369. Leaves a cash balance at April 30th of $497,728 with projected revenues, expenditures, and transfers through June 30th, 2013 of $179,321. Leaves a cash balance at June 30th of $677,48, less the required reserve of $130,935. Leaves a surplus at June 30th of $546,113. For the corrections fund, we started July 1st at $394,379. We have year-to-date revenues of $691,581. Operating expenditures of $442,763. Salaries and benefits of $1,441,144. Leaves a cash balance at June 30th, or April 30th of, uh, negative $797,947 with projected revenues, expenditures, and transfers through June 30th, 2013 of a positive $843,228. Leaves a projected cash balance at June 30th of $45,281. Uh, the reason for that we go negative at that point is because we transfer money from the general fund to make up any operating revenues, and so we usually wait till closer to the end of the year to transfer that money down. It doesn't violate any state statutes for us to do that. It just makes it to where we can have a cleaner transfer, and we know exactly what we're going to need to transfer as we get closer to the end of the year. The next item is on the new business. Approve or disapprove appointment of three members of the Hela Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees. Currently, we have three members, um, Mr. Lydic's position that was filled by Mr. Freddy Rodriguez to, it expires June 30th, and so Mr. Rodriguez's term will be up for reappointment, um, on, which will go July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014. One term will have to be that. Um, also, the, Mr. Morales, Robert Morales, um, his term is expiring as of June 30th, 2013, so that physician will need to be reappointed, as well as, um, Dr. Roberto Carrion's position is expiring. Um, the physician's position is for July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2016. So we have received, we've posted it, um, we've received applicants. Mr. Rodriguez is put in again to continue to be on the board. He served this three weeks or so that he'll serve before his term expires and he's fulfilling Mr. Lydic's. We've also received, um, an application from Mr. West, Gordon West. Um, Mr. Robert C. Morales, Sr., Bobby Morales, um, who's currently a board member, his term's expiring, put back in to be reappointed for his term. Um, we had a Mr. Edwin L. Wilmott, Reverend Van der Bevel, and Ms. Gail Stamler, CNN, have applied for the non-physician positions, which we'll have to choose two of those individuals. And then for.
One of those positions will be for a one-year term, right?
Yeah, one of those positions will be for July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014, and one will be July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2016. The reason for the one year is just to get all the in line so that we only have a maximum of three people rolling off in a one-year period. Right now, we're not in alignment, and so this will align us up. The physician position, we've received an application from, uh, Dr. Mark S. Donnell. Um, Dr. Roberto R. Carrion has put in again and requested to be put back on the board, and we also have received one from Dr. Donald J. Steiner. And so there'll be one of those individuals selected to serve the July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2016 position. Um, these, these are all that were submitted and received by the deadline that we put. So.
Will the others?
If anybody else put in, they didn't get put in here if they came in after.
And you send them a letter stating they didn't make the deadline?
Um, we typically do that. I don't know if we received any after, did we?
My allergy.
Okay, so.
I thought there was two others we were going to put in.
Yeah, we didn't receive any others. Um, I haven't received any. We'll make sure, and if we do have them somewhere, we will send them if they did not. But this is all that was received by that deadline. Um, the next item is approve, disapprove the intergovernmental transfer of ambulance to HeLa Regional Medical Center. We've talked about this a little bit. We've got some, it's some ambulances and some other equipment. Um, what we've done in the past is HeLa Regional Medical Center, through their fire protection funds, their EMS funds they receive, um, the Fund Act monies, have bought equipment, and Grant County has titled and licensed the equipment, the, the G plate. We've currently run, been looking at it myself and, and Mrs. Robinson, along with our insurance. It, it gets real fuzzy because we don't, we own the vehicles, we don't have control over the vehicles because somebody else is driving them. We have an insurance on that side and our insurance that kind of conflict each other sometimes, and so it's just cleaner if, because they are a component unit of Grant County, um, we've looked at, I've been talking with Mayor Mark, or with James Marshall, who is now the EMS director there and projects, that we're looking at transferring these assets from our books to their books. They still remain Grant County assets, but they'll now sit on the HeLa Regional side because Grant County owns HeLa Regional Medical Center, and then they'll title them in their name. And so then their insurance will take care of them. We won't need a policy from their insurance naming us as an additional insured because it's our equipment that they're driving, and it kind of gets rid of this, um, undesirable situation, I guess would be the way to say it. Um, and, and so this will clean that up, and so it gets it, um, off. And, and so you'll see, it's the things with a G plate. There's one Suburban, there's a pickup, um, there are some ambulances, a trailer that have been purchased, um, and they've been purchased using the Fund Act monies, and so we go ahead and automatically title them and get a plate on them, so.
So the 95 is scratched off?
That's not on the list of transfer. Yeah, no, that's not on there.
And then that, that one Suburban's going to be made in about 100 years?
The Suburban and the trailer without a G plate are not on there. And what we're going to do is to make sure too, is Jacob's going through, um, and currently we show these are the items that are still under Grant County with the G plate number. Um, if he's, he's going to check today with, in the motor vehicle system to make sure that they still show these are titled with us, and if there's something in here that shows it's not, that it's been titled already with HeLa Regional, we'll go ahead and pull it off the list for Thursday, but for right now, we believe these are the items that are still titled under us that are being used by the hospital, so we're going to transfer them over to them.
Okay, so we'll have a clean list with all the plates on Thursday?
Yes.
And then that one year is wrong, 2810?
Yeah. I saw that.
Can be made in 798 years?
So, we're thinking ahead.
Yeah.
It's our replacement plan. So, and that's what we're doing with this. There's no, um, and this equipment wasn't bought out of Grant County's funds, it was bought out of funds that were fiscal agent for, for the hospital, for the EMS over there. Um, the next item, G, approve, disapprove appointment of county assessor to fill an unexpired term. Um, you've received, um, information, we've talked with you, um, and you received a letter from the assessor, uh, Mr. Villa. He's taken the position as the General Services Director and Fire Management Officer for Grant County. Um, he's given the commissioners a resignation letter that he will be resigning as the assessor on the 13th, this Thursday. Um, and so by statute, it's the responsibility when an elected official, other than a commissioner, um, resigns from their office or a position becomes vacant, that elected official's position becomes vacant, it's the commission's responsibility to appoint a replacement for that individual that stands as the replacement until, uh, the next general election, and then they will have to run in the general, right, Ralph?
That is correct.
So, and so they will have to stand, which the term expires at the next general election anyways, um, so, um, so that's why this item is on the agenda. Um, you've received, um, a letter from Mr. Villa, um, on his recommendation to the commission as well as, uh, a letter from Mrs. Guthrie, his, uh, chief deputy, current chief deputy, which she's here. So that will be an item you need to act on, and then the process will be, um, if the commission chooses to appoint at that meeting, then that individual will need to be sworn in by the judge, um, which, um, we've already spoken with Judge Laney, and she said she is available to do that ceremony for whoever the commission chooses to appoint. Um, she is available. She has some meetings there that she told us the process that we can follow to get in touch with her, but she can do the swearing in on Thursday so that we can, if the commission chooses a new replacement, then she can swear them in that day and have them take office. So there will be no lapse of not having an assessor. I don't know if Mr. Villa wants to say anything to.
All right, just another one.
Um, the next item is contracts and agreements. It's prove an amendment to agreement, uh, Animal Control Service of High Desert Humane Society. Um, currently, Grant County does not, we do not have an animal control officer. Um, I don't know that we've ever had an animal control officer we've contracted with. It used to be Grant County Humane Society, and they changed their name to High Desert Humane Society. Um, we currently have a contract with them, uh, an agreement that we pay, uh, so much money a year and then so much per animal, cat or dog that are brought in that come from Grant County. It's been working very well, um, with them. Um, there's, um, we've looked at in the past of, of hiring our own animal control officer and, and with the conditions we were in at that point in time, it really wasn't going to be cost-effective for us because our costs wouldn't really reduce with the Humane Society, and then we would increase our costs of having an animal control officer on our side. So for this agreement, they go ahead and provide the service as well as we provide them a vehicle to do the service as part of the agreement. So what this amendment is doing is keeping all the other terms the same, it's just extending it from June 30, 2013 to expire June 30th, 2014. Um, it, it costs us roughly about $65,000 a year to have them house and collect the animals.
How much?
$65,000. Um, we looked at it, we talked with them a few years back and talked about if we hired our own, what would be the cost if we just had them house the animals, and they told us it would be $50,000. So, so there's, and there's really no other options unless we build our own facility to house animals, and, and I wouldn't advise that we do that, so.
Well, they do a really good job.
They do a good job. They work well with the sheriff's office. Um, we, we did have some issues in the past with the sheriffs, talked with them, and we've got those figured out. Um, seems to be working well. Um, you know, it's hard. There's, they try and be there as much as they can, there's times that they can't, and so we try and work with them, but all, all in all, they do a very good job, and they try and get as many animals out, back out into the community if they can, or, you know, they try not to. And they, and then what they've told us is if an animal, they feel an animal is adopted, we only get charged for the first three days because that's their process as they keep them, and then after that, if they want to keep it longer, then we don't get continually charged for that animal. So, and we'll fix the, up in the title, it's G R N A T instead of G R A N T. So we'll fix that typo, I just noticed, sorry. Um, the next item is professional service contract with the Recovery Management Center providing services to Grant County DWI program, not to exceed $25,000. Um, this is, is part of Cindy's program. We've done it every year. It's with Chris Helgert, um, to do comprehensive outpatient alcohol and drug individual treatment for DWI vendors. It includes individual treatment plans, monthly, monthly reporting, referral, recommendations at higher level of care, um, and it, they submit private insurance for Medicaid. This money comes from funds that Cindy receives, um, through the courts. It doesn't come out of the general fund to pay for this. Um, she has some other contracts that go along with her program that are under $20,000 and that the commission gave me that authority, so I already acted on those, so this is the only one that has to come in front of you, uh, if they're under that deal now. Um, she's done, this is, they've done this many years, works really well. This is just setting it up to go forward, um, as they've gotten their new agreements, and this will terminate on June 30th, 2014. So she does a contract for each year because her grant funding goes year to year, and so that's why you see these each year. This is the first time for Commissioner Hall seeing them, but you'll see them several more times before you're done. The next item is resolutions, approve, disapprove the resolution R 1301, Amendment to the Open Meetings Resolution. The, we do the open meetings resolution in January of each year. Um, because of the legislative session this year, they made some changes, um, to the requirements for the Open Meetings Act. Do you want to go?
Sure.
Um, so I'll let Abby go ahead and explain to you the changes that she's made to conform our resolution to what the new statute states.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I think you're probably already familiar with the revisions to the Open Meetings Act that were passed this last legislative, legislative session, and, um, if you look at the red, red line material, that'll show you the revisions that we're making to the resolution. The main one is that we are having to give our agenda, um, we have to give a draft and a final earlier, I think they're both earlier than before. Um, we have to give the draft 72 hours before the respective meeting, and then the final 36 hours. So it's going to change our schedule just a little bit. We have to, you know, be on top of it a little bit more than we were, um, but I don't think it's going to be, you know, unworkable. We can do it, and we've already worked with Randy to figure out a schedule. Um, I think he's already done it for this meeting, just so he can practice for the next one, um, and it'll be effective for our next meetings, um, so the end of June. Let's see. And the other requirement.
Effective to July 1st, but.
Actually, it, according to the INMAC, uh, you know, I didn't do the research on it, but according to INMAC, it goes into effect, I think, June 30th, or shortly after this meeting. to INMAC, it goes into effect, I think, June 3, or shortly after this meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It goes in, you're thinking in the middle of June for some reason.
Um, I think it has to do when she signed it. I'm not sure. But then the other main requirement was that if we have an emergency meeting, which we haven't since I've been here, so they're pretty rare. Sorry, my voice cracked. We have to report that to the Attorney General's office within 10 days after we have one, so that they can check out, check it out and make sure that we really had the emergency, I guess. But we do that so rarely, I don't-
It's called self-incrimination.
I guess.
Yeah.
I don't think that'll be an issue for us, because-
No, because we are not going to have any special meetings.
We call special meetings and we always follow all the rules and-
Special meetings are fine. No emergency-
We're not going to have any emergency meetings.
So this will take a little more work, cost maybe a little bit more, the paper and the publishing, but it's doable.
Yeah.
I believe those are the only changes.
Now, you stated that the final agenda has to be 36 hours prior to the meeting. That's if, only if you have a work session. If we, sometimes when we're, when we get in-
Actually, I described it based on our schedule. For instance, a special meeting, that's going to be a long meeting that doesn't necessarily have another meeting in the same week. So you're right, the requirement is that you're always going to have your final draft 72 hours before that meeting.
Of whatever meeting, okay.
Unless you have another meeting within the same week. And I believe that little require, or that exception was for the counties, because most counties have the two, two per week meetings. So if we have a special meeting and that's in there also, we have to, it's 72 hours.
Sometimes when we get busy, we say, well, we can't come on Tuesday, we can only come on Thursday. Let's do it all on Thursday. So therefore, we would have to have the entire agenda on Monday.
And I think the way we've set up our schedule will be on track.
Okay.
But we will pay special attention to that.
And one thing Randy and I were talking today, one thing that this is going to cause is, is we're going to need all the departments. We've, we've had instances and we've been taking them in where we'll get stuff right before this meeting and start putting them on agenda. Or we'll do it tomorrow morning, because it was a 24-hour notice before where we could add something real quick. We're going to have to really stick by our schedules now that we require Wednesday.
But we can still add things at this, at this meeting.
We can add stuff at this meeting, but once this meeting is done, we're done. There's nothing being added to the agenda, because we're trying to meet that 36-hour time window.
And that deadline, just to kind of keep in the back of your mind, I think we came up with, it was 5:00 o'clock on Tuesday.
So like, for example, if it was in effect now, the deadline to change the agenda would be, uh, 9:00 PM tonight. But since we're gone, when we leave at 5:00, it's, we're using it at 5:00 PM at the close of today, and that's the final.
I agree.
And you've always done a good job, Randy, to just keep this on our toes.
Yeah.
Randy's is organized, it's going to be done here.
You know, it's, it's just irony how this was all done, because it was pulled out of a committee where it was dead by consent in the final waning minutes without a majority of a, of a House committee, and pushed down to the House and passed through by consent in the waning moments of, of the legislature and sent to the, to the Senate for consent, and it just was, it was all done. It, it's like Big Brother's trying to make us have all these rules, and they followed none of their own to get it, so.
Yeah, no rules whatsoever when it comes to it. Yeah, yeah, they're exempt, the legislature is exempt on the Open Meetings Act. They exempted themselves, but they put more requirements on it, so they don't follow them, so. So that's the reason for that, the changes. The next is the resolution R1323, revision to the vehicle accident prevention policy. I'll let Abby go ahead and explain this one to you as well.
Actually, this is the same policy that we put on a couple months ago. It's exactly the same draft, the same red lines. And I explained before that it was slightly more, well, not slightly, it's more advantageous to the employee and it's more workable for the county. What we're doing, the main change is that we're waiting, when you get convicted of something that's going to affect your driver's license, we're waiting until the conviction happens. We're not going to go ahead and try to address the issue before there's a court decision on it. Before, we were really having difficulty handling that issue, and it's kind of complicated with the, with the union timelines and all that. So now this will be a more definite time, timeframe that we'll have to follow. Also, we're taking out the requirements where we had a certain number of major violations. For instance, if you had free traffic tickets within a certain period of time, you know, that would lead to discipline. What we're doing now is we're taking those, because those, we realized those were too high. Even I would have trouble following. I'm very cautious, I think. But we realized that wasn't very workable, and also, we learned that the, the system in place already has, there's already a point system that the state follows. So if you get so many major traffic violations within a certain period, you get points for that, and after a certain number, you'll, you could potentially have your license suspended or it can be revoked. So we're going to follow that. So if that happens to the employee under the state's system, then they have to report to us, and then we will take action at that point.
Chuck, can you please take your background check on that?
We do. We do monthly on our drivers, and so.
Why stop?
And what has happened is, and, and some of this is, we've gotten candidates in that have been very good candidates for a job, that it's not a driving job. And they may have three speeding tickets in three years, one each year. And by our policy, we cannot hire those individuals, even though it's not a driving job. We were turning these people away because they violated our accident prevention policy of having three violations within three-year period, and so.
Oh, I thought they, I thought they were driving, they just weren't frequent drivers. So there's positions that drive sometimes, but even if you had two in a, in a year, I think that caused us to maybe turn some people down. And also, you know, it affects our current employees too, who say they get one too many traffic tickets. It could, and it's even minor stuff. So, as long as it's a moving violation, it was included in our policy. So this loosens it up a little bit. We're still talking with the union about it, so our goal is to have it on the agenda on Thursday for your approval. And we also clarified the reporting requirements. We just made it a little more clear that the department heads and the employees, they need to let their, either the county manager or their supervisor know when they get a traffic ticket or a DWI or something like that.
And what this is, a lot of us focusing on is not driving our vehicles, driving your personal vehicle. Our policy extends that if in your personal vehicle, you're getting speeding tickets that could affect, and that's why we were trying to make it better. So, and I'll actually be meeting with the union at 2:00 today. They have one thing they would like clarified, and I think we, Abby and I have talked, and I think we've come up with their answer without having to change anything, so it shouldn't be an issue. The next item on the agenda is approved, disapproved resolution number R1337, notes of intent to consider an ordinance number 1304, entitled an ordinance requiring a movement certificate and tax release prior to moving a manufactured home within Grant County and providing for penalties and enforcement for failure to comply. This is the ordinance that Mr. Armendaras has brought to you a couple times, that they're trying to, as the treasurer's affiliate, they're trying to get all the counties to approve, to make it, I guess easier to track the movement. Mobile homes are easy to pick up in the middle of the night and move somewhere and not know, and then when they go to check it for assessment or for collection of taxes, it's a vacant lawn, and we don't know where the thing resides. And so this is to help try and track some of that. It's been issues throughout the state on the collections of the manufactured homes. And so, he's put this together. Ms. Robinson has reviewed it, it's for legal sufficiency. And it'll come in front of you if the commission chooses to approve. This is just a notice, then it sits for two weeks in the clerk's office for the public to view and to make comment, and then we'll have to have a public hearing and action on the ordinance at a later meeting for the commission.
Steve, we've got all the, the bugs worked out on who's taking the tag out and who's picking the duff and all that now?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This subject came up on the swap meeting, and I think all the commissioners agree that it's a very good idea, because it's happening in the other, other five counties also. If you can get us a letter, so we can get you a letter for, put one together for us, we'll get for you.
The next item is resolution number R13-38, adopting Grant County return to work and modified duty policy. What this is, is currently, we don't have a return to work and modified duty policy. Our policy is that if you're out on an injury, be it workman's comp, be it you were injured at home, you can't come to work until you've got a full release from the doctor. There's been situations where we've had work, for example, in the sheriff's office, he's had work that is in the office work, that doesn't require individuals to be out in the field, that he could have utilized these individuals that were released but not released to full duty. They were released to a desk duty or light duty, and we haven't been able to bring them back. We've had to keep them off onto a workman's comp situation because, or even just out at home if they've injured themselves off the job. And so it doesn't benefit the sheriff and it doesn't benefit the employee, because they're, they're not getting paid for this time. And, and he could be using these people to, to catch up on some work, and, and other departments as well. Our policy's kind of always been, because we do have some situations, like in the detention center, we never know who's going to have to get into a scuffle in there if all of a sudden the inmates start acting up, and we don't want to put others in jeopardy or that individual in jeopardy because they can't fully function at their job. So we would look at the different situations. It's just automatic, it's not automatic throughout the county that you would be able to return back to work, because we have this policy at a halftime, it will have to be looked at the position. I know Abby's worked on it, if you can, if you have any comments, I'm going to say.
It's, it's common, most of the other counties have, you know, these modified duty policies, and I really just took and combined a few different policies to work with Grant County. We'll look at the situations on a case-by-case basis, and of course, be fair, but it really will depend on whether there is necessary available work and whether the restrictions permit them to do that work. So each of them will be evaluated.
Yeah, and, and we stated in the policy that it is a case-by-case basis, and there is no guarantee that you will be given modified duty. It's, if, if we have some work you can do and we have the availability to do it in that position, we will do it. Otherwise, you won't be afforded it. So it's not automatic, and, and I don't think it's going to cost Grant County anything by doing this. It's actually going to help us out. It'll help us perform some work. And, and we do have departments, the departments in this office, treasurers, assessors, managers. If you could come back half duty and it would, even if you were injured, if you could work half a day, it would be beneficial to us than just having you out all the time. And right now, we don't have something in place to do that, so this will allow that to happen. The next item is resolution R1339, calling for special election regarding the imposition of county capital outlay gross receipts tax. This is that second piece. So if during the public hearing, the commission chooses to approve the ordinance to go forward with the special election to do gross receipts tax, then this resolution will be considered to set up the parameters of special election and give the direction to the court to conduct the special election with the question and everything that he needs to go forward, when the election dates are and lines it out. So this is that second step. So, believing that if the commission chooses not to approve the ordinance, then you don't want to approve the resolution, because you don't have anything that you're going to go for a special election on. So these two are tied together, that's why the ordinance comes first and the resolution second. They go hand in hand to each other. And then, the next item is, we have a request for proposals, item O RFP 13-02, professional services. What we've done is, working with Mr. Gutierrez, as put together with Jacob, we went off RFP for general engineering, surveying, architectural, and environmental services. We broke it to where a firm could either apply for one of those categories or multiple categories in it. So we had seven firms that responded in different places. You have a letter from Mr. Zamoroff to me that shows who responded, the engineering, the environmental, the archaeological, and the surveying services. One of the firms, Sotomayor and Associates, applied for all four. Other places, there was only one in the environmental, which was Sotomayor. And you see the points that they were given in there. After speaking with Mr. Gutierrez, and because each of these firms offers a little bit different, our recommendation to the commission is, is going to be to award to all the firms that responded, because then that'll give us a wide array. Some will only be surveying companies like Z3 and AMB Surveying, which would give us the ability that a lot of times, if we go with, if we're just looking for surveying services, if we go with a company like Engineers, the, for Sotomayor, that put in for the engineering piece as well, or the surveying piece as well, we get marked up, because they'll go out and get a contract with somebody, and then they mark that up 10%, and, and so it's in our better interest to go directly to just the surveying company. But if we're working on a large job where it's going to have engineering and surveying services included as part of it, then we would like to go with one company, so then they can just line it all up, and we don't have to try and coordinate with everybody to get them on time. They're responsible for making sure the deadlines are met. And so that's why we were looking at, and the way that they responded, we feel that it'd be better if we got everybody on board. It would allow us to have better flexibility. Our RFP was written to where we could get everybody on board if we wished to. And, and so it's just, I think it's a lot better package for Grant County as going forward with that. And, and then, and it gives you a wide variety, because we did have a wide range of people that have different knowledge and skills, and that would give us, I think, a well-rounded group of individuals to work with. This wouldn't replace the current archaeological, general, our general architectural services we have currently, and it would not replace the one the commissioners did for the services with WH Pacific just at the airport. That one is just for the airport. These individuals won't be doing work out at the airport. WH Pacific does that, so the FAA is in line with who we have, because it has guidelines that need to be in that RFP. This will be for other projects outside of that scope.
Okay. I think that concludes the Thursday's agenda.
There's a resolution that I wanted to add, if I can add still now. I'm trying, I'm probably the worst offender. Randy's going to have to work on me the hardest on this new law. Cindy McLean, we've been meeting with the judges on a misdemeanor compliance program and the fees, and it's come to our attention that we never came in front of the commission to put a resolution in front of you authorizing the DWI program to collect the fees that are set by the courts as part of the misdemeanor compliance program and screenings that we have to do. And so we've put together a resolution. Abby and I are going to meet with Ms. McLean and just kind of cleaned it up and taken some stuff that she's put. And we have a couple questions that we want to ask her before we have it finalized for you, but we want to add it for Thursday's agenda so that we can have it in place going forward. And basically, what it does is it sets up that there's a misdemeanor compliance and monitoring program fee of $75, that, that basically comes through the two magistrate courts. Commissioner Hall dealt with this when he was in his former position as a judge, working with Cindy. And then, the monitoring and tracking program, the statute allows the courts to set a fee of anywhere from $15. It used to be from 15 to 30. In this latest legislative session, they changed it to 15 to $50 a month that is charged to the offender, that they have to pay to the compliance program to be part of that monitored, and that pays for the drug tests and breathalyzer tests that have to be done as part of that program. It helps offset that cost. And so that's what this resolution will do, is we'll get you all copies today. We're going to try and meet there after the meeting and get those, a couple things finalized. So I just had a couple questions on how we wanted to work things specifically, because if the courts are imposing these fees and we're just collecting the fees. And so, but we'll have it for you Thursday, and that's all it'll do, is just set it up. The program's already in place and running. We're going to expand it to include some more people into it as the courts request it. And so it'll be a well-rounded- And so it'll be a well-rounded program, and then we're also going to coordinate it with a surveillance program that'll be being done through district court. And so I think it'll work really good together. But we'll have that for you. Just had a couple of questions, I was finishing it this morning, and I had a couple of things right before the meeting I wanted to verify.
Okay. I guess we'll move into county reports, and I'd like to start with Mike because he always has a nice written report.
Lieutenant Chairman, County Commissioners, I respectfully submit my report in June two thousand and thirteen to Grant County Detention Facility. Item number one is the policy and procedures, just an update. We have pretty much, we have them all together now. We've put all the policy and procedures together now. What we're doing is just tweaking those, making sure that we've got everything in the right place, with the exception of the medical, and we're waiting for the bid, see what's going to happen with the bid for the medical. And that's the only policy, the only part of the procedure that we haven't put into the overall policy and procedures. But as far as the procedures concerned, we've pretty much got them all together now. So that's a plus. That was one of the things that we needed. Item number two, the detention facility staff. We conducted several shakedown initiatives utilizing the resources of Grant County Sheriff Department, US, the New Mexico probation and parole, and also the correction department on Los Cruces. They assisted us with those. We were very successful in the shakedowns and the cleansing of the facility. Deputy and the zone and myself have been working with Continuum of Care Coalition. We've been working with them, with some other board members. We're trying to put together an inmate support program. And what this program is going to do is it's going to, when the release of the inmates is going to prepare them. Our part of the detention facility with the detention officer will be trained. We will conduct training with the inmates inside the facility and prepare them for release into society. We will show them some areas and resources to such a job and those types of things. So what we're trying to do is keep them from re-entering the facility and cut down on the recidivism. I'll be attending a meeting with the LFC on the thirteenth, in hopes that we can present this program for the LFC for funding, and we're hoping that we can be successful with that so we can cut down on the recidivism. As far as the detention facilities, as our second assessment, we did get the, we did get our assessment back from the Department of Corrections. We reviewed that. Basically, we came back with a pretty good assessment. There's only some position changes and some personnel issues that we need to take care of, which I think we're already doing, the policy and procedures was one of them. And so we've already, we've pretty much taken care of that. We just need to kind of reorganize the back to make it a little more efficient, and that's what we're going to be working on. I want to get the assessment back from Luna County, just to compare that and make sure that, you know, they're going to be pretty close, and I really believe that they're going to be. But I think once we get that back and we start making those changes in the back of the jail, then I think it's going to, it's going to make it, we're going to be more productive back there with the, with the way that the operations are conducted in the facility. As far as the training is concerned, Sergeant Gary just came back, first-line supervisor's class. I talked to him first day back, and he was walking on his toes. He really, really appreciated that class. He really got a lot, a lot from it. What he's going to do is he's going to put a presentation, he's going to put a class together for the other sergeants and supervisors. I do want them to attend. It was his recommendation that they all go, so we're going to try and get them after the, after July comes. There's a couple of classes. One's going to be in Albuquerque, and another's going to be in Los Cruces. So my hopes are that I can get those supervisors to those classes, because he said it was, it was very well worth the effort, and he was very excited when he came back. He's also going to, we've done the OC spray. We've got everybody certified in the OC. We're going to do the LifeScan. I think John wanted that going again, so we've got some people coming down the state. They'll be here on the seventeenth, and they're going to conduct the LifeScan. Procedures shows how to do the fingerprint. That's the instrument in the back, machine in the back where they can put their palms in there, and what it does is it reads palm prints and stuff with the fingerprint. That hasn't been, it hasn't been working for some time, so we're going to get it back up there and running so that the detention officers at the booking, they can start utilizing that piece of equipment, and I think we'll get that going. So that's on the seventeenth. We're going to have our pharmaceutical certification training that's going to be on the twenty-sixth, twenty-fourth, and twenty-sixth, and that's because of the medication and stuff. We want to get everybody trained up, so we'll make sure that we're good to go in that particular area. And also I talked to Sergeant Aguirre and a detention officer, Munoz, and I think it's important that I also get other officers involved in the, in the training aspect and the personnel of the detention facility. And I found out that Officer Munoz had put together a, several manuals with all the forms and everything. He was very excited that I asked him to participate with Sergeant Aguirre, and they're going to put together a field training exercise for the new officers. And I think that's, that's going to be great. Any new, any of the new hires will go through this field training exercise. I'm going to kind of leave it up to them, but I would like them to go at least three months through the training, make sure they're all trained up before we actually release them in the back and get them prepared to take, take on the job by themselves. Item number five is the intervention. We continue with literacy links. Joe and I attended a meeting last Friday. We solidified the fact that we do want literacy links to continue to come into the facility. They come in three times a week, and they conduct parenting skills, GED training, and other training for the inmates. Also, women and men's AA and NA continue to go in and do counseling once a week. We have religious groups that continue to come in. And one thing that we, that we've been doing too, I think has been really nice, is some of the inmates that are adjudicated for long terms, say they're going to go up to a state institution. What we do is we pre-select a book for them, and we produce a video so they can give it to their families. And what they do is they read to their kids. And I think it's very important that they keep that video and the kids keep it with them, and the inmates enjoy doing that also. It's just a piece of them that they can leave with their families before they have to go off to long term. And what we're trying to do is keep the families together. Item number six, department will be working on a recognition program last month. Rosie Limon was picked by the, by the personnel for the employee of the month, and this month, Joe and I are going to go ahead and donate a dinner package to a local restaurant here for the employees in the month for this next month. So we'll be getting their name, and the employees are very excited about that. So I think it's really important that we continue with that program. And the last, item number seven, just some statistics. I added a few of them for you, kind of give you a better idea of what's going through the facility. The average population has been seventy-eight, which is pretty close to last month. The males was, in the comparison to last month, they were twenty-two, twenty-two males lower than they were last month. Females were about the same. There were fifty-four males and thirteen females sentenced during that period, during last month period. That's a new statistic that I provided for you. Also, I put in the monthly arrests so you'll know who the agencies are that are bringing in the highest number of inmates, you know, for the billing purposes. And just to give you an idea, Silver City PD had ninety, New Mexico State Police had thirty-eight, Grand County SO had twenty-three, Barrett had eighteen, and Hurdy had one. And I think the last thing is also important that you know is the detention facility conducted nineteen district court transports, and we conducted sixteen for Division One magistrate court, and we conducted six for Division Two magistrate court. That's all I have. By any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions? See, when you give a good report, you don't get any questions. Thank you very much. Terry?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we're just winding down this year, and anybody who just started another year. Everything's good. We ended up getting a little bit more money for next year, so our budgets should be really good. That's sort of all I have unless you have any questions.
Any questions, Terry? No. Thank you very much. Earl?
Hey, Commissioner, Chairman, Commissioners, just business as usual down there. We're working pretty hard on that truck bypass road, getting it ready to tip seal. There's going to be a lot of traffic on there whenever they tear up that bridge over there on the street, so we're really spending a lot of time over there. We'll probably get it tipped seal within the next couple of weeks. Other than that, just business as usual, unless you have any questions.
I was up Royal John yesterday, and it's going to, it's probably going to need some work because there's so much traffic on it right now. I'd wait until they're, they're done, but you're going to have to.
Sunday, when I was up in Albuquerque, we took some barricades up there. I guess all the loogie losers were up there, everybody's waiting and everything, so as soon as they give us the okay, then we'll get up there and put that kind of thing up.
All right. Any questions, Earl? All right.
Chairman, Casting Commissioners, this Thursday, we do have the North Bay, North Hurley Bay opening for the SOR up there, so it'll be here at two o'clock. I will be attending that one. Me and Anthony have been working on that. Also, the batting cages are complete out there at Fort Barrett. We did have Garcia Finska out there and make some solid foundations and some larger, a lot better pipe out there than they, than they sent us, so it's, it's going to hold up this time. Also, we've been in the process of moving Cote de Caminos. We did move everything in for their, to their new facility. We did set them up, so they're, should be operational once the four mines are in. But I mean, as for desk and equipment, we did move them in there, so they're ready to go. I'm just letting you know that the buildings have been used. We had graduations over the last few weeks, so we continue to think this weekend, we still have a couple more graduation parties at some of the facilities. We've been booked, and I know there was a baseball tournament that did get canceled by Ron Bottel this weekend, so I know that they were going to have a tournament, but we are getting ready for, I know our seniors will be having their tournament here pretty soon out there. Then I know All-Stars are also coming up for the local little leagues here for copper and silver, so we do have the facilities out there for use. Also, I've been working with train, uh, train for the, working on the service agreement for air conditioner HVAC units for the detention center and also for the conference center, which is going to include ACE. So we did break it down to get ACE's amount, for an amount separate from our facility. So I did give that to John. John does, John does have that information, so we could try to get a service agreement on our units. We did get the detention center up and going, the unit we did have trouble with. I worked with train in Honeywell, and we got that fixed last week. So we have the cells that were really hot. We do, they're cooled off now, and they're, they've been working good, not going to win, so hopefully that'll continue. But I think the service agreements are, it's going to really help for us to, some of the stuff that we can't do ourselves, as, I mean, filter-wide and some of the stuff, me and my, my crew could do that ourselves, but some of the other stuff needs to be checked periodically, and they will do a quarterly check on all the facilities that do have the train units. We do have thirty-six facilities total, when that's including the jail and the conference center. So I think it's, it'll be an asset for us to have them get on board to help us with those units if we don't have any issues in the future. As for that, I don't have anything else.
Questions for Jessica?
No.
Okay. I know that we did have a little problem, I talked to you about the heat, the cooling over at the conference center. It's all working now. I'm wondering if some kind of little card or laminated card or something above the thermostats with some directions or something might, might be a good idea because I know that none of us were smart enough to write them that day.
No problem.
Okay. Thank you. Chair?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hold on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. For the month of May, we had three hundred and sixteen calls for service. We took a hundred and twenty reports, and it's just been pretty steady as far as our calls. I do want to thank the public for being a little more involved with us, calling us on suspicious activity. It's actually helped us out quite a bit because our burglaries have gone down substantially. I also want to thank Mike Carrillo for helping us out with our transports. My civil division right now is shorthanded, and with him helping us, it's really taking a little bit of burden off on us. Other than that, I have nothing else to report unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Chair? Okay. Mr. Treasurer?
Okay. We are right now in the process of mailing out the delinquent tax notices. It's three thousand seven hundred and forty-eight of them, unfortunately, which is eighteen percent of our total. Even though we are at a ninety-eight percent collection rate for the last ten years, there's still a lot of small accounts that are, that account for our delinquencies. We've got eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars out in delinquent accounts, so hopefully we can move forward with that and get those moving. And other than that.
No questions. Thank you very much. Mr. Assessor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of board. I'm just trying to obviously wrap up the end of my fiscal year, which would be June fifteenth, when I certify the values to the state of New Mexico. I want to thank my staff. They really worked hard. I think we brought in enough value to make sure that the rates applied to those values are affordable for the people of Grant County. I want to thank my chief deputy because she has worked really hard on, on making the system work with Tyler. Again, I know I talk about it, we've had it for four or five years, but we've really put a lot of effort into making sure it works for us as far as the, you know, the appraisal, our mass appraisal computer system. And so I'm hoping I can do that, working with John and getting him those figures so that we understand, you know, running the yield control formula here probably in August, so give the county an opportunity to see what the rates would be and the revenue stream coming in. We're going to continue to work on the reappraisal. We broke it up into four quarter sections of the county, and so we're going to continue to do that with the staff. And I just want to thank my staff for working real hard this year. Unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions for Andy? Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Commissioner?
Well, no, that's because, I got to go, Chairman, thank you. I have no good. I just wanted to, next week, several of us from the county will be attending through different elected offices and the managers' offices, as well as the commissioners. We'll be attending the Association of Counties as their June meetings. We excitedly get to go to the booming metropolis of Clovis, where hopefully it won't be on fire, but I think it's going to be a lot hotter. It's going to feel like it's on fire down there. So we'll be traveling to that. A lot of good topics this year on the, on the agendas for everybody there, so I think it's going to be some great meetings. I know that for the managers, we're discussing a lot of the sole community provider information and things that have been really affecting throughout the whole state, all the hospitals, and so I know it'll be good. I know the commissioners are, are doing some resolutions that'll really help change the way we do business and make it easier for us, so I'm really looking forward to it. Not necessarily driving the eight hours and going to Clovis, but looking forward to the meetings and, and the information that we'll get. That'll be, our new general services director and fire management officer will be attending to start his new career and start getting his connections with the different people there, the different fire people and everybody else, so he can start to grow his network throughout the state. Looking forward to Randy starting. He and I haven't discussed if he starts Friday since he resigns as assessor at five o'clock on Thursday, or if he starts Monday, if I'm going to give him the day off. But we'll talk about it, but he's been, I think it's going to be really good. The couple fires that we've had already, Randy's been involved in as a volunteer firefighter as well as getting information to us. He attended the meetings with the Forest Service, got a lot of good contact information from them, so they're keeping him in the loop so that he can keep the commissioners and myself informed on changes that are happening. And so I think it's going to be really good. That the position changed a little bit from when Gary Benavides was in there, but that was because of, Gary was a unique individual, that he had a lot of experience and a lot of, built a lot of connections throughout the different agencies. So we're not able to do everything that Gary did as in calling in air tankers and things, but the Forest Service has said they'll work with us, work with Randy. Gabe Hoagie, the FMO over there is gladly will work with us, come in and help us on the fires, which they did at the one down by the landfill, the one night. And he's been keeping us up to date on this current fire, the Silver Fire. So I think there won't be any issues. I think the fire departments are going to have a good asset in Randy and his departments going forward. I think it's going to be a really good setup as we did the job description, and looking forward to Randy taking over and working there. The front of the building is contractors out there trying to get the inspection today to start to pour the footings on Thursday and get that project going. They're looking at being done by the end of July with the full front of the building. So that project is going now, so you're going to start to see a lot of activity as they get this section poured, the couple walls that are left on this side over here. Then we'll put a temporary ramp in that'll come straight into the sliding doors on this side of the building, the east side of the building. And then we'll begin to demo the rest of that pad out there and go across and, and complete the project and then open up the back, the front entrance of the building. So I'm really looking forward to getting that done to have the heat. So I'm really looking forward to getting that done, to have the heater wire there, so we don't have to worry about the freeze anymore in the winter time. It'll be controlled by a thermostat, so it'll automatically come on if the temperature gets to a certain point, start to warm the concrete, so it will no longer freeze, and we don't have the issue we have now with it cracking from the salt and chipping. So it'll actually make it a lot better, also for Justin's guys, don't have to try and rush in here early in the morning and start to de-ice the place after a weekend. Since it is the north side of the building, it really freezes up in the winter, so this will be beneficial and help with the safety of the front of the building. Other than that, we're just getting ready for year-end, getting ready for final budget, trying to get with Randy on final numbers, and Mary, working on the final numbers of the evaluations, using last year's tax numbers to try and come up with what we think our revenues will be, so we can put together a final budget for you for July 31st, and then going through and correcting some of the accounts, taking a look at them, seeing if things were charged properly, and making our adjustments, so that in probably next meeting, we'll come with you for the budget revisions to adjust the budget for year-end, June 30th budget, so we can get some better numbers, so that we can go forward with that final budget, so.
Did you have a chance to look at those pooled cash reports? Were they pretty close?
Yes. We looked at the pooled cash reports. They're real close. What Linda's working on right now is, there's an item that's in those pooled cash reports that's not showing on the report but being pulled in. So she's working with Tyler right now. They're fixing that issue, and then we should have no issues. We showed them to the auditor, and he was happy with where they were at.
When did you meet the auditor?
It was, been several months ago. We were able to pull, as we finished up.
So you haven't shown him any new ones?
We haven't shown him any new ones. We showed him, we had about five months of them at that time, and he was happy with where they were headed. We just had to correct that one item. So I'll get with Linda, and we'll make sure we have all that put together for year-end for the commissioners, so that you can see those reports that show the bank balances compared to our cash balances for each fund, is what that report does.
Because it's that time of year, we ought to start skating those guys in for their...
Yes, and we've already sent the contract up. The state, state of New Mexico changed the audit requirements this year, that you have to send by May 1st your contract for an auditor, and they notified us all on about April 20th. So they didn't give you enough time to go out for RFP or do what you had to do for the process, and if you didn't have a request up to them by May 1st, you got an automatic audit finding that you were non-compliant with the Audit Act. So we were able to get a bid from Mr. Stone, because he had just finished those audits. He had given us assurance that there'll be no problem meeting our November 15th deadline, and so we went ahead and sent a contract up there. I've not seen it back from the state auditor yet. They had a deadline of May 1st to us, but there's no requirement for them to get it back to us at any point in time. So that last, we've seen that contractors up there waiting for their approval on it to have it come back, and then we will proceed forward. But we did receive acknowledgement from them that they were not going to audit us. The state auditor chooses who they're going to audit, and then they tell the rest of the people, you can go out for your own. We were notified that they were not auditing us, that we had to hire our own IPA to do the audits. And so that's what we've done. We're just waiting for that contract, and then they'll get in here right at the end of the year and start gathering information, so that we can get that done by November 15th deadline with no issues.
Okay. Any questions for the manager?
Okay. I will call you the first. Well, I just have a couple things. I had the privilege to meet with John and Mr. Bentley from the hospital, the hospital administrator, got some information from him, and it was an okay meeting. I still don't feel that the trust is there. I am asking that we can, I'm asking that we, as a commission, request the state auditor to come in and do a complete audit at the hospital as soon as possible, being that the trust isn't there, and I just don't know what numbers we're really looking at. So I would like to request that as a commissioner, and request that from our commission as soon as possible.
What's the process for that?
I will find out. What we'll do is, we'll add it to the agenda to, as an item for the commission, if you wish, to approve, and then I will contact the state auditor's office today and find out what, I think it's just a letter that has to be written with the items that are concerned to ask for a special audit, but I will find out. I know Torrance County did it, and so we can find out with that letter. I know it came from the chairman of their commission.
I think it's only fair that we do this to suffice the information needed to run the hospital for not only the board, but for our sake of being in charge of the hospital.
When you call him, ask him what our contract is.
I will ask that as well.
Another, I'd like to also request that we start an ecosystem management group, and that would be a group that would look over watersheds and fuel wood treatment and vegetation management. And the reason that I was requesting this is that we've got so many areas within our county that could actually go up in fire, and seeing these late fires, it's really concerns me, because, I mean, being that we're in charge of safety, health, and welfare of the community, I really feel that we need to do a better job taking care of our watersheds and making sure that we thin where it really needs to be thinned, and of course, plant new vegetation if we need to plant, and get our watersheds taken care of. We really, I really feel that our role as a county has been jeopardized, being that we have such high fuel woods in a lot of the different areas, such as Pino Salto, so God forbid if there's a fire in that area with how thick the fuel wood is. There's a lot of areas in the member's, even in the Gila, that we really need to protect as soon as possible, I feel. And I'm requesting that of this group to put together a ecosystem management group that will not only look at the watershed areas, but put in for grants to help out either the county or the Forest Service with monies to clear the watersheds or work on the watersheds. I've talked to a couple retired Forest Service personnel, and I know like Mr. Ralph Pope, for instance, he's come up with grants that have provided over $5 million in some areas to prevent different watershed disasters. Okay, so, I mean, I would really like to welcome him into this group if possible, and whoever else you all wish to help out with. I mean, I think a group of five would really suffice this management group, and I think it can really do us a lot of good in working with the Forest Service and protecting our watersheds.
What we can do is, we'll get with Commissioner Ramos, do some research, and bring it to the commissioners at a future meeting, maybe next meeting in June. I just don't know how much research that we'll get with Commissioner Ramos, work on something to bring forward to the commission.
Well, I'd like to see if we can bring in the Soil and Water Group, somebody, a member from Soil and Water Conservation, a member from Forest Service, and then the rest of the people, just concerned citizens from Grand County, of course.
Randy or somebody would be.
I tell you what.
I know they're both busy.
Or we can also...
Things in the county move, and you've got to get some county employees involved.
And then that's fine. I mean, any suggestions? I mean, this is going to be something new, but I think this would be really good for our county.
Yes, I think, along those same lines, too, I think our contacts as part of the Association of Counties and Joyce, as far as the Association of Counties, that we use on through either the Forest Service or BLM, would be a good contact as well to probably get it off the ground, and maybe we can look in, I can look into some of those contacts as we go to the conference.
We just got to change our way of thinking to preventive versus fighting a catastrophe when it gets here. And the safety, health, and welfare of our people is, of course, is number one, and we've got to put this group together to really work on our watersheds or the fuel wood areas. I mean, I think if we do this, at least in the immediate areas, it's going to save us a lot of heartache in the future.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
First of all, I'd just like to thank Randy for your service to this community, and I'm excited about you bringing that same leadership that you've shown as an assessor to the position that you have now, and thank you very much for that. And the other thing, it's just, it's just been off what Commissioner Ramos has been talking about. You know, as a government, as a Forest Service, we can put together all kinds of programs, but it takes individuals to just use good common sense. Everything from grinding to welding to whatever it is, make sure that you cut a path around your shop, around your home and stuff, so that it is safe and stuff, because it's not something, a lot of people think, well, it's one of those things that, it doesn't happen to me, it's just on TV. Well, it will happen to you. I guarantee you, it is, it's bad out there, real bad, and the whole county is. And so it's going to take a community, it's going to take a community to make sure that we keep the community safe. Like the Quell Ridge started way over there at Tyrone, and you see where it went within just minutes. It's crazy how fast it goes. So it's not only taking care of yourself, but taking care of your neighbors, so that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm going to echo some of those same sentiments. It's, I'm just sitting here looking at this map, and, you know, several miles of 152 have been crossed. We've all driven across that black range so many times, and now it's going to look like a moonscape with toothpicks stuck in it when we go across there. It's not going to be beautiful anymore. It's not going to have the wildlife it once had. And I'm one that, I've echoed this sentiment all two and a half years I've been here. This could have been managed. It could have been grazed. It could have been properly harvested, and they would not be fighting this fire the way they're having to fight it. I don't know when that's going to finally get across to these people, that doing nothing with force is mismanagement. It's not management. And that's all I have to say about that. So at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn?
It's over. Say again?
All those papers we tried to say out?
All right.